I will call to order our city council meeting of Monday, June the nineteenth at approximately seven P M. I will be serving as the moderator of this group. I'm the mayor, Terry Merritt. So appreciate you guys being here. It's good to have a good side of the audience in the middle of some, well, almost the beginning of summer. Be sure I read my calendar. Thank you guys for being here. We'll try to move it along and explain the processes. I know there's a couple of people ask me like, what do y'all do? We might take a little bit of time, extra time tonight to describe why each person is speaking and what they do, kind of thing that the committee chairs would allow that to happen when I recognize you, if you would. Explain that a little bit. We'll help them get a little bit of understanding. No dissertations, just a brief, not looking at you particularly, but just, just keep it brief and we'll go from there. But appreciate everyone being here tonight. Let the records reflect that Councilman Mattney, Councilwoman King, Councilman Grayling, along with Councilman Allgood and Councilwoman Kuzner are present and in chamber. Councilman Reynolds will not be with us tonight due to a family issue that came up. Also, our city administrator, Ms. Seth Duncan, is with us, along with the lady who tries to keep us all straight, our city clerk, Ms. Cindy Miller. Appreciate her there. The department head sitting back in the corner. Thank you guys for being here, except for Bart, that y'all wouldn't allow him to sit with you. We appreciate that. But we do appreciate the Recreation Director also there. Along with our illustrious city legal counsel, Mr. John Doohan. Good to have him back in chambers with us as he's been away for the last several months. Letting his younger partner, I got it correct this time, the younger partner, be with us. So appreciate you being here. Tonight, we'll begin with our invocation, our pledge of allegiance, and I believe Councilwoman Kuzner, you would lead us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray, please. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for blessing us with another day to live and serve like Christ. Lord, please guide us in the decisions we make regarding agenda items before us tonight. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. First items on the agenda tonight, some proclamations and presentations. The Greenville Transit Authority presentation, I think Walker, you're here with us? Please come up, be sure the green light's on, if it is on.
Good evening. Again, I am Walker Smith. I am the board chair of Greenville Transit Authority, and thank you for having me. I have been the board chair since the beginning of last year, and my term will end at the end of this year. So I would like to spend about 10 minutes just giving you a brief update to what's happening with GTA. If you remember last year, we were speaking about the maintenance facility. It started, we broke ground in October of this past year, and we're expected to move in in about April of next year. If you remember last year, I was telling you that we were thirty million dollars short because of inflation and all these fun things. So I would like to say that we are fully funded. We will be moving forward and have had that funded, so we don't have taken any loans. So thank you to S C U S D, South Carolina Department of Transportation for helping us fund that gap. And this, if you look at it, is part of this construction site. If I'm looking at it correctly, I believe this, this is the top deck, if you, when you, if you actually, and if you want to go look at it, you're more than welcome, just let me know. The property is the old Washington School, and where the maintenance facility part is kind of down low is where it's going to be the, where the football field was, and it's got a fairly significant drop. And up above it will be the, the new office space. So I believe this looks like it's looking down on the maintenance facility, looking up from the offices. The offices have dried in, and this is the maintenance facility. Because of the weight, they're having to dry it in, and then they have to pour the concrete. So it's kind of an interesting different way. But you can see, this, I believe, is the, gosh, I haven't been out there in a while. The bus, the bus openings, and they will be coming in from there. And again, you can see them drying it up and putting the top on. Again, they had to put the top on first, which is kind of an odd, you dry in and then you put the ground on. But the office building, they all have studs and have been worked out, so it's looking pretty good. The weather did hurt us immensely in the fall and did slow things down. And then I don't think last Monday or last Sunday night storm, week ago, helped much either. It filled up all of our the wells that we're going for concrete. So we've had a little bit of trouble, and you can see, right? But I will say that we have had some, that this property, because it just had dirt dumped on it for decades, it was very bad about flooding the neighborhood area behind us. And with all the stormwater mitigation we done, it's at least prevented that. My pictures. If you remember correctly, also, we have did a transit development plan back in 2018. And one of our first things that they wanted us to do was to extend our service hours until eleven thirty at night. We completed that in January of 2021. So you can catch a bus from five thirty in the morning to twelve, eleven thirty at night. The next one we want to do is extend those hours on Saturdays to match the daily schedule. The thing that is hindering us with that is it takes more bus drivers, and just like everybody, we're having some issues with finding service, bus drivers. Once we finish the maintenance facility, we are hoping to improve our weekly route, weekday routes to thirty minute intervals. Right now, if you remember, they're an hour, and if you miss the bus, or we're early, or we're late, it really can wreak havoc on your day. But it does take an extra bus for every single route. So we don't have parking currently at our facility on Augusta Street to park any more buses, and we don't have the facility to be able to maintain it. So none of this will be able to go forward until we finish the maintenance facility. And then we, after we do the weekday routes, we would like to include routes on Saturdays, also thirty minute frequencies, and then add thirty, and add service hours on Sunday. It'd be a twelve hour service, be shorter, and it wouldn't be every thirty minutes, but it would, would provide some, some service on Sundays. These may not all be done in this order. I do believe that they want to extend the Saturday hours first, but the other ones could be however we need to deem it, kind of in different orders. And we also want to add some new routes, and I'll discuss that in a little bit. We did update the transit development plan in 2021. Why? Because we have population growth, we had different people moving in different locations, so we updated the data. More countywide discussions, a need for what transit needs to be do, and we did some other kind of things. I will say, we did get a, I'm gonna forget what grant, a raise grant, I believe, from the federal government. So we're going to be doing a, and have been doing a lot of rehabs and redoings of all of our bus stops. One of my favorites is called, because not of our bus, all of our bus stops have a, a building. But we wanted to give a little more safety for the passengers and for the, for the bus driver. So now, if you go, they're putting these little single lights that you can push a light, it will light up for you, so you're being seen at night, and has a little seat for you, too. There's one on Lawrence Road, right on eighty-five, if you're, if you're interested. But they're just a little safety feature for someone, so they're not standing in the dark, and also that our bus, we don't stop unless you need to. So it's our, our bus drivers can see that there's someone sitting there. But yes, we were doing that. If you look, these are the new routes we would like to do with the, we did consolidate. We did have eighteen routes. We've consolidated into fifteen routes we would like to. You can add C, and I don't know if I have. Well, you can see the bottom right is the Fountain Inn Circular that we're hoping to put. We have a Malden Circular. It's the blue routes will be the new ones, and then we would hope to continue to GSP. And if, I don't know if you saw in the paper a couple of weeks ago, but there is a study to see how transit can be supported at GSP, both from Spartanburg and from Greenville. So these all depend on finding finances to help offset the cost of doing the transit. As I mentioned earlier, we do have some issues with finding bus drivers. So in twenty twenty twenty, we decided to start training our own. So you can come without a C D L to GTA or Green Link, and we will train you for nineteen dollars an hour. You're getting paid, you're getting free training, and then it bumps up to nineteen sixty, once you complete it. So it has been successful. We are trying to, you know, get creative and remove barriers that are preventing people from getting jobs. We do have part-time jobs. We have seasonal jobs. So if you have, you know, for instance, somebody that has a small business that may need some, some insurance, they, they get state insurance and those kind of things, if they are full-time, part, full, regular part-time jobs, not seasonal jobs. So for instance, some of the trolley is seasonal, so that wouldn't count, but the other ones are. So if you know anybody that's looking for a job that would like to be a C D L driver, please send them our way. And this is one last thing that we're doing. Starting July first, we are going to have a new transit app. I don't know if you've ever noticed, but we have had our own transit app called Ride Green Link, which is just, if you ride Greenville's bus, you have to download it to update it. And we are going to be going to use the transit app, which is actually an app focused on non-car transit, but it has bikes, it does where you can get an e-bike, it does Uber and Lyft, and kind of an all-real-time activities. It is married in with Google Maps, I believe. Google Maps. So it is something that will be going live July first. And again, the nice thing of it is, it's not just for Green Link. You can use it for any or many different buses, bus services around the country. So if you're traveling, and they use transit, you can also use it here in this location. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer any, or if not, thank you so much for your time.
Hi, Ms. Smith. How are you?
I'm well. How's the other man?
Everything's going great. You went through everything pretty quickly, but I know that we have some friends in the media who are watching us online. You said that there are job vacancies, and if we knew anybody, send them your way. For our friends who are listening online, or for our friends in the audience, what does it look like sending them your way? How do they contact you and find out what those jobs are?
We, those jobs are through the City of Greenville, so they can get them through the City of Greenville website. Yes, they, they are all employed by the City of Greenville, even though we are a standalone agency. So I think it does get a little confusing that GTA is a standalone agency. We own all the buses, but we are, have an operating green with the City of Greenville that, that our employees are all city employees. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Appreciate it. On our agenda is a B S, V A S F scholarship presentation. I would ask Mr. Mattney if you would join me down front, make a few remarks and recognize. One of the good things about being up here is to recognize some of our business partners around the City of Malden. Especially good when you have a longtime excellent partner that we have just down the road here that, let's see, since twenty ten, we call it V A S F. There's been like three different names there, but we have with us our site director, Mr. Gerald Murphy, representing V A S F, and he's got some exciting news for us, as well as a little bit about what V A S F is doing. And accompanying him is a member of the V A S F Community Action Committee, our own Mr. Randy Etheridge, that serves on our Malden Planning Commission also. So Randy, thank you for being here again.
Every year, we hand out four scholarships to students of Malden High School that are studying different science fields. And this year, we are lucky enough to have two of them here with us today that we're going to recognize. So the first one is Danielle. And the second one is Gabriel. Gabriella. I'm sorry, Gabriella. Yep, you're welcome. All right, thank you. All right. So thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Council, for giving us a chance to present these scholarships, and also give you a little bit of an overview of what we do. So V A S F is a company. A lot of people don't hear about us. Those who do know about us from way back is, we used to make videotapes and cassette tapes. And then for a while there, we had a commercial that says, we don't make the things you buy, and make the things you buy better. To give you a little bit more, V A S F is one of the largest chemical companies in the world. We're headquartered out of Ludwigshaven, Germany. We have sales of about eighty-seven point three billion in twenty twenty-two in euros a year. We're in hundreds of different countries. We have six giant sites that we call Verbund sites. For example, our one in, our headquarters in Ludwigshaven is two-thirds the size of Manhattan. Our site in Louisiana is approximately two thousand acres. So we have those big giant sites, but a lot of the companies also smaller sites, like what we have. We employ about a hundred and eleven thousand people globally. So what we do at Malden is what we call Care Chemicals. Care chemicals are different things that you use to take care of yourself. So from soaps, laundry detergents, suntan lotion, all these other different things. If you ever read the back of them, they have all those different things that are listed that have a bunch of really weird long names. That's what we make. So we make the active ingredients or those components, and then we send them to our customers, and then they formulate them into a final product. So for us at Malden, we make personal care. So we're making things that you use for yourself. The site itself was established in nineteen fifty-five. Right now, we have about eighty employees at the site. We added seventeen employees this year. It became V A S F again at the end of two thousand and ten. Different things that we make there that you touch, hand soap, so soft soap. If you see soft soap, we make a lot of the active ingredients in that. The little shiny stuff that's in there, we make that. Various shampoos that you buy, body wash. If you ever look at the back of a bottle of body wash, it'll say this really long name, and then Betaine, B E T A I N E, you'll see that. We make that. Sunscreen components, other things. We also make some components, agricultural products that we send to different agricultural chemical companies to use also. So that's what we do at the site. Now, I'm going to explain the site, because one of the things is, is a lot of people drive by and you wonder what you're seeing. And so I thought it was important to maybe give this, or, you know, take this chance to show that. So one of the first things you'll see is this big brick building over on the corner, and that's where we have offices and warehouses. The next thing you'll see in the back, and this is the most visible thing from the road, from Main Street, is you'll see these big tanks there in the back. Those are wastewater treatment tanks. So we have a wastewater biodigester where we'll treat our wastewater, and then we have a clarifier to remove all the solids, and then we'll send it to the, to REWAL, to the P O T W for treatment. So that's what those tanks are on the corner that you'll see. We have some railcar unloading and storage. Then along the side road here, we have office labs and warehouse. And then this section that's circled here is, is the production center. So that's where we produce and actually make our various different products. So moving on, we want to talk about environmental health and safety at the site. It's been over six and a half years since our last lost time injury at the site. We had zero environmental deviations in twenty-two and twenty-three. I came to the site in February of last year. We had a successful DHEC RMP, so EPA code, environmental, it's an EPA requirement, RMP audit that DHEC did with no major findings. We've had two inspections by REWAL with no findings. And we're actually working on a project now to increase our wastewater outputs to REWAL in order to increase our production and capacity at the site. One of the big things about our company also is that we have a lot of sustainability goals. We work to continuously to further reduce emissions from our production, but one of the big things is we have actual goals that have been set. So one of ours is to be, reduce our carbon greenhouse gas emissions by twenty-five percent by twenty thirty compared to two thousand and eighteen. And then for twenty fifty, we're trying to achieve a net zero. So for every bit of greenhouse gas we produce, we're consuming the same amount somewhere else in the process. You may say, okay, how do you do that? A lot of the things, you know, roofs, HVAC systems and lights, but it's also things like our boiler system. So we have big gas-fired boilers. So when we're working on up, well, we're updating them right now. We're working on what we're going to update them with. Exploring those technologies, whether it be e-boiler, a combination of e-boiler and on-demand. One of the technologies we're looking at is on-demand natural gas, which can be converted to hydrogen. So we're looking at all these different technologies, but those are the ways we're, we're working towards our sustainability goal and reducing our impact. So for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three outlook, big thing here is, is our capital spend. So back in two thousand and thirteen, shortly after the acquisition, we're spending about two million a year. Right now, we're spending around seven to eight million a year into the site and capital, continuing to refresh, replacing equipment, going to the area. You know, these are all good things, both to sustain us, but it also means that we also are using the, the best technologies, and all of our equipment is staying up to date where it needs to be. The community involvement, which is what brought us here. Last year, we contributed about eighteen, you know, little less than nineteen thousand dollars into the community. This year, we're up to twenty-two thousand in our goal. Everything from Malden Elementary sponsoring steam labs and projects, United Way, the Cultural Center. Again, the four high school scholarships that we were doing tonight. And you can see all the different groups that we work with right now. We're continuing to try to grow that as we continue to grow in the community. And for what we had, so for Danielle and Gabriella, you know, thank you for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it. And you can see here that the other two winners, but these are all science fields, STEM fields, that we want to support people going into and, and hope that maybe one day they can work for us, too. So. And that's it. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Obviously, you're, you're investing into our Malden plant pretty heavily. My, my question for you would be, are you discovering and finding new uses for, for the plant itself, that you can produce things beyond the products that you mentioned?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things about this market that we're in right now is, especially in this care market, is we still import a lot from our sites from Europe. So what we're doing is putting capability into this plant so that we can make our domestic demand in the U.S.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank, thank you for coming out tonight, and Mr. Etheridge for being a, a part of this and encouraging Council to, to have this presentation here tonight and to award our, your scholarship winners. And thank you for your company, for everything that you do for our community. B A S F has always been very generous and given to Malden, and I don't think that a lot of people realize that. With the scholarships being at the top, and like you said, all of the various agencies that you give to in our community. So thank you. We appreciate it.
Thanks. Just a word of thanks for the tour when Mayor and I came over. It's been several months ago now, but it was a real education to be able to sit down and see firsthand what all is being done out there. We take our partnerships with our business partners very seriously, and we just thank you for being here and continuing to invest in Malden.
Thank you for giving us the chance to come and talk and do the scholarship presentation. We appreciate that also. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
All right, thank you.
Next item on our agenda this evening is our reading and approval of the city council meeting minutes of May the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. That's been in our packet since we picked it up a lot apart last week. Everyone's had a chance to read it. Any corrections, notations that you've observed the need to be made? Here are none, if it's okay. We will accept the minutes as submitted by unanimous consent. Any of those posing, say aye. Here are none of the minutes are approved as submitted. Thank you. Next item, I, I recognize some, some of the faces that have been here before, so you know what we're getting ready to head into. Those that haven't been here, I'll give you a brief rundown of the public comment sections. We have two on our agenda. The first one is reserved for any item on the agenda this evening that you wanted to speak to. Let me give you a little bit of the boring side of it, but anyone wishing to address the council must fill out the speaker's log. I have it, so you did that. Your name, address, and agenda item, a subject matter, and wish you to speak, and we'll ask you, as you come to the mic, to also say your name and your address in the city. Once the meeting was called to order at seven P M., there was no additions to that log. You're allowed to speak on any matter other than personnel matters or matters under litigation. Any consideration items on the agenda will be the first public comment. Present, present, presentations, we have a lengthy agenda tonight, so we will limit your presentation to three minutes, if you would, please. If you are following a speaker and you basically want to say the same thing they said, you could identify yourself and say, I support what he or she just said, or ditto, or whatever you'd like to say there. So unless you just have something you want to really adamantly express, that's a repeat. We'd appreciate it if we just keep it moving right along. There's no sharing or seating of other times to another signed-up speaker. We would ask proper decorum must be observed. We would ask proper decorum must be observed by not only members of council, but by our speakers and our audience. Uh, I'll try to keep, I will keep control of the meeting and require the speakers and audience to refrain from abusive and profane remarks, disruptive outbursts, applause, protest, or other conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly con- conduct of the business of the meeting. Personal attacks on city member, city council member, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. It's inappropriate to use a public hearing or a public comment for the purpose of making political speeches, including threats of political action. Engaging in such conduct and failing to cease with such conduct on the request of the mayor will be grounds for ending a speaker's time at the podium or for removal of any disruptive person from the meeting room at the discretion of the mayor. Your comments should be directly to the chair and to this council. It is not a question-and-answer session, so there won't be a argumentative correspondence back and forth. It is your chance to publicly speak to this council. Now, give me just a second to tell you a little bit about what we have in the city of Malden. City of Malden elected to use the form of government called the council form of government. Everyone sitting up here was elected and has one vote. So tonight, there's six folks sitting up here. Each one of you elects each one of us at large. There are no wards in the city of Malden. So we're all in this together. We all represent the entire city, not a select neighborhood or group or anything like that kind of thing. So with that being said, we have six standing committees. Each council member chairs one of those committees and serves on two others. So when I get to the uh, standing committees, you'll hear me recognize each chairperson to go over and uh, update us on what may or may not have happened within their respective areas for the last month. Now, that's the committee they chair, but they speak to all issues of the city of Malden. So, everybody clear? You will want me to repeat everything I just said. Thank you very much. Didn't want to. Alright, so we've got that. Uh, first public comment uh, section is on issues before us tonight on the agenda. So the first person to sign up, Chuck, Chuck Reel will be for an item not on the agenda, so that means you get to watch the whole meeting for your opportunity to speak. An item on the agenda tonight is Ms. Brenda Thompson. You would come to the microphone and may need to adjust it a little bit to where you can speak into it, state your name and your address.
My name is Brenda Thompson. I live at one thirteen Summer Woods Drive in the Summer Woods condominium complex. I have lived there for the last fifteen years. I am a former nurse, former court reporter, a former psychologist. So I am very much aware of the emotions involved in what I'm about to speak to. I've done counseling, and I know what frustration is being caused by what's going on. The proposed and zoning committee-approved building is definitely something that is weighing on the hearts and minds of every resident of Summer Woods. There are fifty-two homes or families represented there, either by owners who are renting it out and by the renters, or by owners who are living there. I bought my condominium because I wanted peace and quiet. And over seventy years of traveling through Malden had taught me that that is one thing I would find here. Putting that building in is going to destroy that. Not only that, it will endanger my home and other homes in the one hundred and three hundred buildings of Summer Woods by the fact that there is, although there's a dip in the land, there is an elevation there that will cause water runoff, and I don't care how many detention ponds or retention ponds that you put in. There's gonna be water runoff. I've seen it every time we have a rainstorm. And Gilder Creek is very prone to flooding. We're gonna be flooded out. I've heard it said that they want to make Butler Road a commercial road. I'm sorry, I don't think the pe- people of Malden want a Wooduff Road right down the middle of town. I like the small-town atmosphere, and I'm sure other people do too. And my puppies love the small-town atmosphere because I walk out with them constantly. I had a stroke in January, which caused me to have to quit working. But that doesn't mean that I'm not gonna be out and walking. It doesn't mean that I don't care about the people around me. And each one of you is included in that. I ask you, before you approve the changing of that land that is being offered to be changed from residential to commercial, consider one thing, pray about it. Ask your God if that is what he thinks you should do. If that's where he's leading you, and take one further step. Put yourself in the middle of Summer Woods. And think about what if I owned a condominium here? What if this was my income that was going to be affected? What if my tax rates were going to be changed? The value of what I spent my life working for is going to be decreased. Ed Morgan sent each one of you an email, and he asked me to speak for him. It's very much against this. Ed has lived in Summer Woods since its inception. You don't want to lose a resident like that, and Ed will do it. He will move because he's not gonna put up with what we'll have to put up with whether we have a choice or not. Please, please overrule your zoning committee. As a woman well past retirement age, I can tell you, I have no choice. I have to live there. Don't make it harder on me. Don't send me back to the hospital with another stroke. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the uh, agenda, Julie Sangre? Sangre, please, come to the podium and uh, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, um, my name is Julie Sangre. My address is three oh three Summer Woods Drive, Malden. I fell in love with this town. Lost my husband a year and a half ago. My daughter lives in Greenville, so I came here looking for a home. I searched for a month and a half. I found my home and I purchased it on June fifth. Never heard of any of this stuff. My sanctuary is my deck with the woods and the birds and the deer. I sit out there and I listen to the happiness and the sounds. Um, the road out front is private. It's not that congested. Um, and I just fell in love with the area. And if I known all of this, I wouldn't have spent every penny I had on this home. That's all.
Thank you. Side of Mr. Cochran. State your name and your address.
Thank you. Y'all are familiar with it. My name's Phil Cochran. I live at four thirty-five Bishop Drive. Uh, you know what my one agenda item is. Every day of the week, every month of the year, stormwater. We continue to have a big problem with stormwater in this city. I've lived in Malden for more than twenty-five years, so I'm very well acquainted with where stormwater runs across the city. I am encouraged by the steps that this council has taken uh, recently, uh, just in the last six, eight months, maybe year, uh, notably with uh, Mr. Krailing leading the charge in uh, you know, heading up public works. And I hope though, I hope that effort uh, does abate the stormwater that runs across everybody's property, across the city-owned roadways, through people's property, underneath their homes. And uh, in my case, my home floods. So as I stand before you today, uh, seeing that storm out in the ocean that is going to become a hurricane and seeing the forecast that we've had the last a couple of days and the four to five inches of rain that are predicted for us in the next couple of days uh, means that I will not sleep very well at night for the rest of this week. Uh, I may be soaking up water all night long in my home the rest of this week. So the first thing I want to do is say thank you for the steps that the city is taking to begin the process of making stormwater abatement a happier concept. And uh, you guys are to be credited for what you are doing and the steps that you have taken. Um, I echo this lady's uh, comments. You know, all you have to do is come to my house and spend the night when there's three or four inches of rain falling, and it would be an education for you. You know, the temptation for us is if it's not bothering my house, then I don't know what all the ruh-ha-ha is about, right? Uh, because if it doesn't affect me directly, um, it, the big temptation is just not to be that concerned. I think this group of people here, I think you're a little bit different because you do take the needs of residents on your hearts, and you do think about uh, people other than yourselves. But uh, I want you to remember me and my family. Um, my son actually served uh, in law enforcement for the city of Malden for a number of years, and he still serves in law enforcement. And um, so we are, uh, I'm, I'm a public, I'm also a very finely paid public servant. That was a joke. You could smile. I'm a very well compensated public servant. I love my job. I'm not paid near what private sector is, but you know what? It's a good thing. So guys, thank you for what you're doing. Uh, I look forward to uh, what uh, all of you can do along with Jason to abate stormwater in our great city. Thank you.
Maria Johnston. Same thing. State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Maria Johnston. I live at three zero one Summer Woods Drive. And I'm basically just um, seconding everything that Brenda said earlier. Um, I can't really add much more to it. I'm just concerned about my home. I'm, I've lived there for twenty-three years. It's my life investment. And if this was happening in your backyard, you would be standing here where I am. Thank you.
I am going to uh, recognize someone whose handwriting is good as mine, which means you can't read it, but six oh four Summer Wood. Mr. Penta. Maybe we need to get Berta to write your name next time.
Yeah. Uh, good evening. My name is Brayham Pinto, and I live at six oh four Summer Woods Drive. I came here to um, to speak about the matter that we have here. So at uh, at the moment, I agree with the first two speakers, what they say. And actually, I'm retired postal worker, serving the armed forces, as you can see. And I used to live up north in New Jersey. And I came from a very congested area in New Jersey. And as I lived there for quite a while, I saw a lot of stuff that is not good when you're being congested. And I came here to tell you all and warn you. I mean, you, you all that know, you have the books, the statistics, what's to be done good and what's not to do good. So you have to look at the congestion. When I live here, by Butler Road, I succumb every morning by car. That's fine. Problem. Then when it says clear, look over there and say, okay. Then all of a sudden, I see, what coming in? This wasn't like this before a couple of years back. I'm serious. A couple of years back was not like that. And now I guess congestion, you gotta be careful. And now I hear more sirens, emergency. As a matter of fact, my wife, she had a few strokes. The ambulance had to came in. And I said, my goodness, I hope that ambulance don't have, have an accident. What they're making, I pray to God that. Amen. Fine. Not a problem. I was up a couple of years ago, but it was getting congested. Okay? So it's beautiful that we want to improve and, and do good things for Malden. But you gotta realize when congestion comes so much, it can bring a lot of headaches. It can bring problems. You have to realize that. The crime rate, I never read the newspaper. I don't know what's going on with the crime rate here. If it's a high or low for congestion, mess it up. You can. You have to look at that. You have to analyze that. Yeah. Seriously. One neighbor, the next neighbor, there's so many people around, there's so many. One wants to have a big party, the other one, I just came from work, I'm tired. So much congestion. You can get so mad. Something could happen, and then we fight. Then then there's problems. Problems and problems and problems. You have to look at that. I know, we want to do good. We want to improve. We want sometimes this is not the answer. Sometimes this is headaches. It's headaches.
Begin to wrap it up a little bit, please.
I, I surely will. I surely will. All I can say is this. Butler Road is not an area to be so congested. Take my word, please. Take my word. We got the schools, and now they want to put pickleball court, whatever. I don't know what it is. There's a railroad train coming in. They're building more stuff. On road, building all these places up there. The more it gets congested, think about it. But as I quit, amen, God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. Tom Newton.
Hello. I'm uh, Tom Newton. I live at five oh five Summer Woods Drive. I'm the president of the homeowners association at Summer Woods. We, most of us have been at every meeting, the planning commission meeting previously. And uh, couldn't get them, you know, they wouldn't listen to our objections, and there, or if they did, they didn't agree with them. But uh, we just think uh, that this is the wrong type of, not really the wrong type, but the this building and everything they're putting in a big warehouse is just too big for the shape of the property. It's a very narrow property going downhill all the way back to the creek. We kind of thought it was, you know, if anybody did put a business there, if it was changed to commercial, it would be something similar to Jor Real Estate. It's right beside our property, kind of up on the road. And, you know, we might still have the woods down behind our units. Uh, the units along this property, that's their backyard, basically. Have patios back there. Uh, no fences or anything. I mean, it's just patios with the woods right there. It's, it's, it's not that large of a piece of property before you get to the next house on the other side. And uh, they're basically gonna have to cut down all the trees in those woods. they're basically going to have to cut down all the trees in those woods. And it slopes down to the creek. I think they're talking about putting in an underground, maybe not a retention pond, but they decided on some kind of piping that goes in, dumps up, tries to dump all this water in that creek behind us. That creek behind us, it goes into Gilder Creek. It's not called Gilder Creek, the one that's actually behind Summer Woods. But every time we have a big rain, it floods and we just had one with the hail we had the other time. And again, we had trees that along that creek, the roots were washed out. And three trees fell and hit our buildings and did damage to them. This happened about five years ago, almost the same place, right along the creek. And it's going to keep happening with this flooding and this property, if all those trees, all that vegetation's cut down and you put a parking lot and all this stuff. It doesn't matter what kind of drainage you put in, if it goes into that creek, it's going to contribute to the flooding. You know, it's just going to keep, keep doing that. The other thing is the parking lot, you know, it's going to have all these lights and everything. You know, our concern is the buffer between, I mean, if you're going to do it, do it right and have big enough wall to make it to where, you know, how would you feel if you had a big warehouse with lights and all this happening in your backyard, especially their backyard, our backyard there? So, you know, if you do decide to do it, it needs to be done right with some kind of more of a buffer than, I think they're talking about a six-foot fence there, which could be like a wooden fence or something. We just, y'all do decide to do it. We wish it would be a different size business where maybe it would only be up at the road and everything and it wouldn't affect us so much. But if you do decide to wipe out the woods there, you know, we'd just like to have a very good buffer between our lives and a business right there in our backyard. Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you all for taking the time to come out tonight. Next item on, let us see, is there anyone via Zoom or public comment? All right. Item report from our city administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Evening, mayor and council. Got a few items for y'all tonight. First, I want to start off, last week I approved an emergency acquisition for storage capacity for Malden Police Department's watch guard video system. After our evidence custodian realized in-car videos were not uploading to our storage server. The 22 terabyte Dell storage system will provide MPD the ability to resume downloading in-car videos and the capacity to maintain those videos throughout the retention period as mandated by SE Law. The new hardware will be installed in the next few weeks and is being funded from unspent funds within Malden's non-capital equipment lineup. The additional storage capacity cost is $22,448.80 from Dell's state contract, is expandable for larger capacity in the future and is expected to last the department 24 to 30 months based on current usage. MPD has already implemented new procedures for storage capacity monitoring and reporting to avoid similar situations in the future. The next thing, I wanted to make the public and council aware that the city's new online payment platform for municipal court is now live. A pay tickets online link has been added to the website under the municipal court page. Upon clicking the link, users will be redirected to a website hosted by in-court where they will have the ability to pay their municipal court fines online. Use the new platform, users will only need to enter their citation or case number in the box provided. Special thanks to Judge Donna Deo and her team for standing up this new system. Next, I wanted to make mention that Spartan Fire has authorized the replacement of the front tires for Tower One at no expense to the city. Keith McHone will be coordinating the replacement of those tires in the near future. And lastly, just as a reminder, MASC's annual meeting will be held in Greenville starting July 27th through the 30th. Our registration appointment is Wednesday for council members who are able to attend. The Municipal Association of South Carolina Annual Meeting gives municipal leaders an opportunity to come together and learn in a focused environment about issue solutions and opportunities facing South Carolina's cities and towns. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Anyone have questions for city administrator? All right. Next item, report from standing committees, our first finance and policy committee, Chairperson Reynolds, who can't be with us tonight. I think filling in as a member of that committee, Ms. King.
Nothing to report at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, for covering all of the public safety items there in your administrative report. I appreciate that. So nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Works, Mr. Crayling.
Clear reported this time.
Thank you, sir. Economic planning and development, Mr. Mattney.
We're good, Mayor.
Sir. Building codes, Ms. Kuzner.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Recreation, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report.
Other stuff going on in the city of Malden. So thank you, guys. Next item before us, unfinished business, ordinances, second reading, Ms. Miller.
We have two ordinances tonight for second reading. The first one is ordinance 1017, the FY 2023 budget amendment ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That'll be coming out of finance. Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion on second reading to approve the fiscal year 23 budget amendment ordinance number 1017.
Okay, if the motion is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Mattney. Is there any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor of the motion to accept on second reading approval, the 23 budget amendment ordinance? They had a number, but I lost it. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Hear none. The motion carries unanimous. Ms. Miller.
Council has requested to approve ordinance number 1018, which is the FY 24 budget ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Back to you, Ms. King. Whoops, I'm sorry. Before we go to that, this is coming to us tonight as a committee of the whole. So I would entertain a motion to consider line item seven B, the 24 budget ordinance 1018 via the informal method as committee of the whole.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion, Ms. King. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mattney. Any discussion? Mr. Craylon.
I believe this is what I have to recuse myself on this because it impacts the company of work.
Okay. Craylon will recuse himself from this consideration. Okay. Nothing else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none. The motion carries six zero and we will consider ourselves via the informal method to consider the ordinance for our 2024 budget. Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for those of you who are staying with us tonight, we appreciate that. We have our, so we're on a fiscal year end, which ends our current year end will be June 30th. And our new budget starts July 1. This is the second reading for our fiscal year end 24 budget ordinance, which is a little over $38 million for our city. At this time, I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year end 24 budget ordinance.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Mattney. Is there any discussion? Here, Mr. Craylon will remain accused from this consideration. Do not, you can vote on the overall. You can vote on the ordinance. This is the ordinance. Okay, so we will continue the recusal. Note to self. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries for the budget ordinance 2024 1018. Thank you. Next item before us is first reading ordinances. Ms. Miller.
Council has requested to approve ordinance 1019 establishing a sewer pump station fee for additional parcels of the Indigo Point development and for certain properties near and adjacent to the Indigo Point development and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Also from finance, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve ordinance 1019 as stated by Ms. Miller on first reading.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Allgood. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor of the motion to approve an ordinance establishes a pump station fee for Indigo Point for 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hear none. The motion carries unanimous. Ms. Miller.
Council has requested to approve on first reading ordinance number 1020, an ordinance to rezone two properties consisting of approximately two acres located at 307 East Butler Road, tax map parcel M 004.02-01-009.01 and tax map parcel M 004.02-01-009.02 and providing an effective date.
Ms. Miller, this is coming out of Business Development Services, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have concerns about this one. But I'll make a motion to approve so that we can discuss.
Can I have a motion? Sorry, a motion from Ms. Kuzner. Is there a second?
For the purpose of discussion, I'll second.
There's a second, Mr. Mattney. That now comes to discussion time for the motion, as Ms. Miller stated, a motion on first reading to approve a rezoning at 307 East Butler Road. Any discussion? Kuzner.
Okay. Several things come to mind in reading through in reading through the information here. One is the number of parking spaces. Because when they decide to have badminton tournaments, where's everyone going to park? So that was a big concern to me. Another one was outdoor lighting. And another one was probably the biggest for me because I understand what all of y'all are going through. 29, nearly 30 years ago, when we bought our home, we had 10 acres of woods next to us. And right after we moved in, there was a big sign that said proposed subdivision. I called my realtor. I said, what is this? And she said, don't worry. She said, more doctors have bought the property and they're each going to have two and a half acres. Luckily, the doctors wanted privacy. And so I probably have a half acre of woods next to me. So I understand the peace, the birds, the deer, all of these things that y'all get to enjoy every morning. I don't, I mean, I know that people have a right to sell their property. But I think that the seven of us were elected by the residents to be your voice. And so I just, when I look at some of the big empty box stores, it makes me wonder, why can't why can't the, this project go in one of those where there's plenty of parking? So I'm not going to be able to support this. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Anyone else? Mr. Craylon.
Just looking at, we're about to hear a discussion about the stormwater. Looking at the area, I have real concerns, especially since the fact that we haven't the better butler yet. Changes that could occur there. There's a lot of moving parts here. We put that, looking at where this wants to, how this wants to be set up, I have a real concern this is going to cause future stormwater issues. Even if we design it and we get engineering stamping, it's a lot of moving parts. I concur with a lot of the things Ms. Kuzner just said, but realistically, that's my biggest hangup is I'm afraid we're going to create a problem here in the city. Functionally. I'll be against it.
Thank you, Mr. Craylon. Anyone else? Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of thoughts. When it comes to the tournaments, I'm not as concerned about about the parking. We'll find a way to make it work. In fact, when we had the building codes committee, I made a comment about maybe even taking some parking out to allow for more buffers. I do like the idea of reuse and Ms. Kuzner made good points about looking and finding new ways of reuse. I will also say that I do know that the planning commission talked about this, kept it in commission, talk about it further. It came out with a vote where there was still one that was against, it came out. It wasn't unanimous coming out of planning. When it got to the building codes committee, there wasn't any representation from the community at the building codes committee. And I just bring that up because when we look at the things that were discussed from the previous public comments, I think that the developer addressed a lot of those. Is it perfect? No. Will something eventually go there? Yes. And if we were to maintain it as residential, you're probably looking at more congestion and more people than what this particular development would have. So I am a little torn on this because I appreciate all of the feedback that was given this evening. And it weighs heavily. It does. But I do think, and this is going to, this might come across as somewhat crass and it's not intended. But when we do have residents that live near a major thoroughfare, these types of things are going to happen more so than if you're tucked away in the back. And we know that there's a better butler allegedly coming down the road. We do know about Gilder Creek. That is definitely a major consideration here. So those are all the things that I'm thinking about before we make our call. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood. Anyone else? Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this short. I would first of all like to state that thank you to Building and Codes Committee for forwarding this to full council so that all of council has the opportunity to discuss this tonight. Mr. Allgood is correct in stating that there was no representation here two weeks ago, which, you know, irrelevant at this point because the committee voted to send it to council for us to vote. I think it's important to understand we're voting on the rezoning. However, if we approve the rezoning, then that will allow the Carolina Sports Club to be built. I think this is a fantastic project. I think it's a great building. I think it's the wrong location. I thought that from the beginning, when it was in Building and Codes, in fact, I had a resident that I was speaking to on a public safety matter stepped out of the meeting and when I came back in, they had already adjourned. And I was told that it was forwarded to full council. Again, I'm glad it was so that we had the opportunity to hear you folks and for the, well, six of us tonight to discuss it. I also talked to a member of the planning commission and I agree with that one opposed member of the planning commission. Good project, wrong location. For that reason, I can't support the rezoning of this this piece of property. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. King. Anyone else? David, would you like to give a recap of the various issues that came before the planning commission and kind of be sure, I know we've read them, but you've highlighted, I know the tree buffers, one, the fence, I heard some- I know the tree buffers, one, the fence, I heard something about a six foot, but I thought I had read something that was different in the traffic in and out. If you could give us a recap on that without reading to us?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. David Dearhop, Director of Business and Development Services. Yes, much of the issues that we heard tonight were brought up at the Planning Commission. And the applicant was given a chance to kind of address those, and I think that the way they addressed it allayed some of the concerns of of the majority of the Planning Commission, which was why they gave you a vote of recommendation tonight. If you have any questions about what's being planned for this project, certainly I encourage you to invite the applicant to speak on any questions you might have. They are here tonight, and I'm sure would be glad to answer any questions or or concerns that you may have that are causing you some angst on which way to go.
Allgood?
So one of the the concerns that was brought up this evening was could it was it was stated that if something was to be developed on this property, that the expectation by the residents were that the building would go towards Butler, and then maybe parking would be in the rear. Is that a possibility for this project?
Anything may be a possibility. You have to keep in mind that Butler Road is expanding, so or the right of way, I should say, is expanding, so that will limit the opportunity in that regards a little bit. But then you're still talking about removing trees to as much extent depending on what the use is, so you know, I could speculate either direction on that. I couldn't give you a crystal ball answer to say, yeah, that's what would happen.
There's nothing in codes that would prevent it from doing that.
Correct.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions? I did speak to Ms. Joy Bailey. She doesn't have a problem with this particular project. She knows that acreage is going to develop. She voices some of the same concerns, and the main concerns I've heard, other than the residents that I've heard several from several, is the building a better Butler project. As we all know, East Butler Road is a South Carolina DOT road. So they have a project that's going on that will be addressing the Gilder Creek drainage with two new bridges. They also have a right of way, it's expanding. I think most of y'all are familiar what it's gonna do to your pool and your clubhouse there, and I believe y'all have a retention pond there next to the Gilder Creek tributary that feeds into that, that it appears the latest drawings DOT would take over that also. So the right of way is going up there. Ms. Bailey is impacted with her parking lot because of that. That being said, there, the upper entrance closest to us out of Summerwood will be joining into an intersection that DOT will be developing, turning into five lanes right there, and there would be, it's gonna be signalized, so you will have an in and out to your subdivision that will be signalized there, so that traffic flow is going to according to, I'm repeating DOT now, not saying my opinion, but DOT, that will improve the flow of traffic along there and will address any additional their projections, growth in East Butler Road through two thousand and forty. So we've got that on the table. I believe the resident on the other side has voiced a concern that other than trees, he sees this a usage of the land that he wouldn't object to from that standpoint. The next house up, of course, is the Bishop Homestead. I along with Mr. Mattney have been here all my adult life. Well, he predates me, I guess, longer than that, my adult life, I guess, when I was eighteen, I moved here, and I think he was born here, so it makes him a little longer type thing. So, yeah, we've seen the growth, we see what's come in and what's going in there. We've seen the property just beyond the Bishop home become, I think it's C two commercial from there out to the intersection of O'Mill Road. We see the development coming on toward the city, and that's commercial property there. So the C one is kind of a buffer between the two, so that doesn't give me as much concern as far as a use. If there's something going in there, from what I know about badminton courts and pickleball courts, there's not a lot of noise and traffic that will, especially no noise is gonna come outside the walls. And I watch pickleball played by our, at Ray Hopkins Senior Center, and some competitive and some joyful noises, and it's played in a gymnasium, and it doesn't exceed the walls. I think the exercise music might permeate the walls sometimes, but it's only for a short period of time. All that being said, I know the Gilder Creek coming back up to the property line on the backside y'all talk about is being addressed. Part of the flooding there is not rain volume and runoff volume as much as it's not flowing correctly, and DOT says they're gonna address that. When they address that flow, I can tell you another neighborhood that will be the recipient of that improved flow. And that's why I import it on a stormwater type thing. I have mixed feelings about this, too. I know everything we've got going on. I would prefer to see this project held a little bit until DOT delivers their building a better Butler and see what we've got coming up there. It's a tough call. Now, I'm gonna have to seek legal here because the Planning Commission recommended approval. This council to override takes the supermajority. Now, our motion was stated to approve on first reading. Don't know that that motion will stand no matter which way it goes because we didn't accept the motion, to accept the motion of the Planning Commission for approval, which would take a supermajority, so our motion was to approve this ordinance on first reading, which would be concurring with the Planning Commission's approval. So for this to be denied would take a supermajority. I got that. Davis may have some information.
Don't have it open right in front of me, so I'm not gonna be able to read it exactly verbatim, but in the zoning ordinance, the way that it specifies on a rezoning when it's being considered by the city council is if the motion or the recommendation from the Planning Commission was to deny the rezoning, then it specifies in the zoning ordinance that a supermajority can override the recommendation of denial. That's what it states in the zoning ordinance. I just wanted to make sure that I wanted to share that in case that changes the legal opinion from the attorney there. Maybe he knows something else that I don't.
So our motion is to accept the motion of approval, so we're not overriding it. So if we defeat this motion, is that an override of?
All right, here, I do have it handy. So section four, colon, two point three point two, action by city council, and this is in the context of a zoning amendment or rezoning. I'm gonna skip down, if it's okay, to the last paragraph where it refers to the Planning Commission's recommendation. If the Planning Commission has recommended denial of a request for a zoning ordinance text or zoning district map amendment, the city council may reject the recommendation of the Planning Commission by a favorable vote of five members to council. So as far as we're discussing the supermajority requirements, what it says in the zoning ordinance is that only applies when the recommendation is a denial. A rejection. It does not say that. Correct.
And, Mr. Mayor, could David explain if it's denied at first reading, what's the process after that, or is its inability to be reheard twelve months?
If this is denied at first reading, the property cannot be requested for a rezoning for six months.
Okay, so the motion before us is to
Let me re-read that for a second. That's if it's withdrawn, sorry. If the city council denies the request, it cannot be considered for the same zoning classification or a period of one year.
Mr. Mayor, there's one other project that the Planning Commission approved that council denied.
Is it a rezoning request or a?
It was a rezoning.
So our motion is to approve the rezoning if it fails.
If you, excuse me.
Go ahead.
If you vote first reading to affirm the Plan Commission's recommendation, then to adhere it again on second reading at a subsequent, more than seven days.
So our our motion is to approve the rezoning. It has nothing to do with the Planning Commission in our motion. So if this motion is defeated, that's overriding the recommendation of the zoning mission. Does that require a supermajority? Yes or no?
The supermajority only applies if you're rejecting
If you're rejecting their denial.
Yeah. But since they've approved it, it's a simple majority of council if you vote to approve, it takes a simple majority.
Okay. All right, so here's how we're gonna handle this. Tonight's motion on first reading to approve the rezoning of three oh seven East Butler Road from R twelve to C one is the motion before us by Ms. Kuzner and seconded by Mr. Mattney. All those in favor, say aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. Can we do a roll call?
Roll call, yes, ma'am, that's fine. Okay, so we'll have a roll call vote on that. All those in
No.
Ms. King?
Aye.
Mr. Graylin?
No.
Let me catch up on my writing. Mr. Allgood?
No.
Ms. Kuzner?
Aye.
And the mayor votes no. So if the motion to approve the rezoning fails, it will remain at R twelve. Cannot be come back before us for one year to go to C one. Okay, thank you.
I didn't need to complicate things.
No, that's fine. I I can be thoroughly confused on a higher plane. The next item before us is eight C. Yeah, eight C comes before us from the Public Works. Mr. Graylin?
This, I'd like to make a motion to approve Task Order Three with KCI to conduct a stormwater fee analysis and evaluation.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any discussion? Mr. Graylin?
I believe the city of Molden is doing something that no city in the state of South Carolina is doing as far as stormwater. We're looking at actually trying to address it because it's a very hard topic, it's very hard to deal with. State doesn't wanna deal with it, county doesn't wanna deal with it. It's up to us in the cities to deal with it. With that being said, there's no funding mechanism for us to pay for this. We recently agreed to matching funds from the federal government, using funds from our general fund to match, and it was over a million dollars. There's another easily ten million dollars worth of projects out there. Not gonna all happen at once. It's gonna take a long time to get through this, to make our city not blood as bad as it has been. This is to investigate funding mechanisms so we can pay to start taking a bite of the elephant in this situation, and it is an elephant. So that's what this is about. This is to fund the study. It's for twenty thousand dollars to have KCI do a study to look what funding mechanisms we have available to us, and it makes sense for storm.
Thank you, Mr. Graylin. Any other comments? Just, Mr. Duncan, if I could, the way I read this on this particular one, the, we're utilizing the ARPA funds from year one?
Yes, sir. The the dedicated ARPA funds for stormwater improvements, yes, sir, come out of that.
We also, did we not do the study, the original study out of that fund?
Yes, sir. Task Order One and Two were out of the, not one point seven million that we had issued, that we had dedicated towards stormwater. So this would just come from those funds.
So there are monies available in the ARPA fund and what we had budgeted.
Yes, sir, yeah, we still had funding available to utilize because we hadn't got too deep into the projects just yet, though there was still twenty thousand dollars.
Is any of this money that we just talked about, you said one point seven, has it actually gone to doing any stormwater work?
We're planning a lot of work, but it's it's about to, yeah. Yes.
Okay, so the one point seven million is still sitting in there about.
No, we've been utilizing it for the the study that we were doing with KCI.
Yep.
So KCI delivered those those six projects, and then we allocated funding to support the grant that that was awarded recently, and we are still have some funding left over enough to pay for this this micro project.
So we're still studying?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Graylin?
Want to make sure people are clear on this. The money that we spent for the studying was to determine how to actually address this and be successful. These are engineering studies by KCI that look at the the biggest problems we have and how to address them, and what has to be done, not just simple things, simple actions. And so this study is now, how do we pay for those? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graylin. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve Task Order Oh Three with KCI to conduct a stormwater fee analysis and evaluation proposed at twenty thousand dollars, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Next item. RG two sanitary also from Public Works, Mr. Graylin?
I'd just like to make a motion to approve the acceptance and funding of the Basin RG two sanitary sewer rehabilitation project.
Have motion to approve the acceptance and funding of the Basin RG two sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second for Ms. King. Any discussion? Mr. Mattney?
Just making sure, this is the skip grant that we're that we're accepting, and there is a financial cost to the city for us to accept the grant?
Yes, sir. We have a match of six hundred thousand dollars, which was budgeted in this year's budget and in the budget for next year's. Yes, sir, we have a match of six hundred thousand dollars which was budgeted in this year's budget and in the budget for next year.
Dad, there's one question.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Here none, here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the acceptance funding of the Basin RG two sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries, six zero. Next item before us is GCR A requalification from Finance, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, at this time I'd like to make the motion to approve a resolution allowing the city of Malden to continue the cooperative agreement with the county of Greenville and the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority in order to maintain urban county status with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you, Ms. King. Is there a second?
Second.
Back for Mr. Mattney. Any discussion? Just a note from my point of view, GCR A has been a great partner with the city of Malden for many, many years. We have been able to address workforce housing through some unique partnerships with them, and you should see some of those projects that have come online and on stream. To know that this council is all inclusive and looking at our housing and availability and affordability and doing all that we can do within the means given to us. So I just wanted to put that out there. Great partnership and I would encourage us to continue this as Ms. King made the motion. Anything else? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve a resolution with the city of Malden's continued participation in Greenville County urban county program? And the rest of what Ms. King said, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries, unanimous. Next item before us is potential reappointments of Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeal coming to Building and Development Services, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, we have two different ones on here, one's the Planning Commission and one's the Zoning Board of Appeals, so I'll address F first, which is Planning Commission. I would like to make a motion to approve the members who are presently appointed to be reappointed to another term or three years, which includes Kevin Green, Jonathan Paulson, and Sean Salin Locklear.
A motion, Ms. Kuzner, on the reappointment of the Planning Commission members, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Mattney. Any discussion?
I just have a comment, and that is we did get another application for the Planning Commission, and it is one of the commissioners who, who have served before. So we'll be speaking about that at the next committee meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzner. Anything else? All those in favor of the motion to approve the recommendation of staff that Mr. Green, Mr. Paulson, and Ms. Locklear to the Planning Commission for new three-year terms, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Back to you, Ms. Kuzner.
Okay, so for item G, it's, I make a motion to approve expiring terms on the Zoning Board of Appeals and up for another three years are Phil Cochran and Paul Calabrese.
Motion, Ms. Kuzner, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Allgood. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the reappointment of Mr. Cochran and Mr. Calabrese to the Zoning Board of Appeal, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Thank you. The next item, ID scanners coming from Public Safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this motion is going to be a combined motion for the police department's scanners and the turnout gear from the fire department. So for second discussion, if needed, I'll make the motion to to approve Resolution Five dash two zero two three, which is a resolution to authorize or authorization to proceed on donation of ten ID scanners from our police department to Traverse Rest Police Department, and for the donation of expired fire bunker gear to four countries.
Motion for Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
Back in stereo, Mr. Crayling and Mr. Mattney. Think I heard that correctly. Any discussion? Ms. King.
Just real quick, as we're, just had second reading for our budget, we're very thankful that our city is able to provide the best equipment necessary for our police and fire department. And because of that, we're able to do these donations, which our fire chief and our police chief were able to bring to council to vote on, so this is one of those good, feel-good resolutions that we're able to do tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. King. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve Resolution Five dash twenty twenty-three in the top topic discussion of scanners and turnout equipment to be donated, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Next item, lights and sound system, commission of community development, Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor, move that we reallocate seventy-five thousand dollars originally planned for the amphitheater and the FY twenty-three budget to fund improvements to the AV technology in the theater itself.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Kuzner. Any discussion? Mattney.
Just a quick explanation, Mayor, we already had money that was allocated to improve the audiovisual equipment at the amphitheater, but after we finally got the estimate from, or multiple estimates from production companies, the, the amount far exceeded what was allocated. Not only that, but there was some question as to the structural integrity of the amphitheater and what it could hold for the lights and the speakers. There is currently money in the community development budget that would fund the continued rental of lights and sound for our concerts and festivals. So this would just move the money that was originally, seventy-five thousand dollars that was originally planned for the amphitheater and to help move it inside for the productions that are done in the interior.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Other questions, discussions? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to reallocate seventy-five thousand dollars originally planned for the amphitheater and the twenty-three budget to fund improvements to the AV technology inside the theater, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries. Next item is concerning the Public Art Trail, Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna ask special guest JR Charles to come forward and lead us through this discussion.
Mayor, Council, for having us and considering this opportunity here, what we've presented to you tonight is a continuation of the Public Art Trail. You've made a effort to install art along the art trail of the cultural center since two thousand fifteen. We want to continue that because staff is new, me in particular, Seth, Christina Faust in the back, who may be helping me explain this as we go along. We want to have clarity about what the process is for approving art. Because the cultural center is your property, we feel like council ought to have a say in it, but the process before is that the cultural foundation, the cultural foundation, yes, approves that, and then that is installed using city funds. That is one of the options that I presented to you, so basically what I have done is in the memo, crafted three options. First option, one hundred percent staff-led, pick out the theme, pick out the finalists, pick out the art, install it using budget funds. The second option is the traditional option, where it's staff managed, and then the cultural foundation would pick the art, and then the city would pay for installation. The mayor and the city administrator sit on that foundation per the bylaws, and so that would have city representation therein. The third option is a hybrid approach, we wanted to see if maybe this is something you'd like to do, is no, by no means our preferred option, just giving options. And that is for the staff to lead the process, for the cultural foundation to pick out their top three with a recommended finalist, and then for city council ultimately to choose the finalist. So we merely wanted to confirm what preference of council is, and so we asked you here for your consideration, and urge any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Charles?
Do you want to have any questions for Mr. Charles? Ms. King.
Not necessarily a question, but just for background purposes, and as he stated, since we do have a new staff. Historically, on the art trail, and I had to do my research myself, but it was pretty much led by Christina's now position. And then she would present that to the Cultural Council nonprofit board as outlined a little bit in one of these options for, for the finalist, and I believe for selection, if I'm not mistaken, I know they did the finalist, and then I'm not sure how the piece of art was, was decided, but then the mayor would sign off on that agreement. You know, Mr. Charles and I had a brief, a very brief discussion about this, and I for one think that it needs to stay staff-driven. I'm not so sure, I mean, I like that the mayor has, you know, the signs off on it, so it's not anything that's totally bizarre and crazy that, I mean, it's worked for eight, nine years, and we have beautiful art on the art trail. I'm not opposed to having a, a hybrid system, but I'm, I'm not sure what that would look like if you had a couple of members of the nonprofit, and then a few members of maybe Mr. Mattney's committee as well as the mayor. So I would like to hear what everyone else is thinking on this, but I, I don't think the system was broken prior to, so I'm not really sure why we need to change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Mr. Mattney.
JR and I talked about this last week, I said, you know, you're really gonna start throwing up obstacles if you want government to pick your art. Ms. King, I'm, I'm with you, I, I think that staff system has worked well in the past. You know, we've, we've had a couple of years where we haven't had this process happen, I would like to see things continue the way they are. Maybe the only thing is since we are allocating money that council acts on the recommendation of staff after it comes back, or the cultural council after they make their recommendations. So when they come and say this is how much it's going to cost, that, you know, we, because we have to authorize the mayor to execute contracts. So that would be the only place that I would see necessarily a council vote, so, you know, that hybrid system where staff manages solicitation of the proposals, cultural council, you know, whittles it down to finalists, staff makes a final recommendation, brings it to council to vote on so that the mayor can execute the contract. Is that cut and dry? What does everybody think about that?
Kuzner.
I'd be in favor of the hybrid system.
The one that's written here or the one that I just explained?
I like what you explained.
All right, cool.
I, I guess I might be confused, I thought you explained the hybrid system.
Put a little tweak to it, which is.
Little tweak.
But can you draw out the tweak for me?
The, the tweak would be that the staff actually brings the recommendation of the artist slash art piece to council so that can, so that council can vote on that particular recommendation so that we can also authorize the mayor to execute the contract since there is a financial transaction involved.
So there's no three finalists?
The, the way I would see it is finalists would be dealt with at the staff level.
Yeah, basically, the legal question was, does that still say council would approve the selection of the artist? So I would say that'd be yes, I mean, staff would recommend the artist, bring it before us, and we could deny it, or we could approve the mayor to sign the contract to pay him for his recommendation, the way I understood it.
I, I mean, if, if you want to get into brass tacks, yes, but we have to authorize the mayor to execute a contract, so that would be a vote of council.
Okay.
I was just gonna add that it is a line item, a budget line item on an annual basis of eighteen thousand. A thousand for, if we had three finalists, historically, we've usually only had two for whatever various reasons, for them to make their models, and then once the, the artist is chosen, then fifteen thousand is paid out in three increments throughout the project.
We're, we're having a discussion without a motion on the table, so I think that's still okay, because the way it came to us is for input type thing. I remember this back in twenty sixteen, and most of you, catch on real quick, I play the country boy type thing, and so, you know, country boy's version of art might not be the same as a theatrical group or trained in the arts, but I grew up here, and I know what this trail was supposed to do, and I remember when GP McLeer was here, AKA known as George back then, we had that discussion, and the guidelines were from this council to say the art needs to reflect the history and the culture of the city of Malden. Now, big discussion on what a culture is for the city of Malden, versus old people lived here all their lives, or it's the newbies coming in here and telling us what art is kind of thing, and that being a kind of lighthearted discussion about this, I do believe this council reflects the electoral that elected you here to represent the city, so I'd like to see this county involve somewhat that. I know when we did the mural on the side of the wall, that got to be a council discussion, and there was two different pieces that came before council, and there was discussions about that, and council finally voted to decide which one better reflected the wishes of council, which theoretically is the wishes of the city of Malden type thing. And the other side of that is the fact that when government gets involved, it can get very convoluted. That being said, I also can, as I pick on Mr. Charles there, being a Georgia boy coming to Malden and telling me what culture is, you know, that's lighthearted also, and so that, you know, how much do I trust him? Hmm, I trust him, voted for him, so yeah, he's good, so I do that. The cultural council, no, none of us have input on those selections, those recommendations. That I was briefed on the cultural council, I guess their latest version of their bylaws, and Mr. Duncan reminded that he himself and myself would be on that board or cultural council to help guide that through there, our destiny if we wanted to kick the can down the road. All three, all that being said, the three of here kind of thing, I trust the staff to bring it back to a recommendation to council, I don't have a problem with that. Don't have a major problem with the hybrid system, other than it could get hung up in trying to define what's cultural. An art piece to me is, and y'all have heard this before, an art piece to me is a jumbo chili cheeseburger half and half at Tommy Kellet's. That's art. Now Diane won't let me eat that anymore, but that's art to me. So, and you can put that in the minutes, Ms. Miller, that way it's on the record that I did. That way it's on the record that I did say it. So, you know, I guess I'm kicking all this to man. I'll go what I feel is the majority that council would prefer and kick it to the recommendation. Mr. Charles, if you had to pick one, which one would you prefer?
Put me on the spot?
Yes.
If it's not broke, don't fix it. I do like the idea of having the Cultural Foundation oversight. It does give at least a piece of the city council and there and yourself and Mr. Duncan having oversight and report practice to city council. So if it's, to quote you so eloquently, sir, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Think that was Mr. Mattney's quote.
Pardon, Mr. Mattney.
Actually, it was Ms. King's and then I stole it. Actually, I re-appropriated it.
Your recommendation would be a staff driven process that involves the Malden Cultural Council and solicitation, review and selection of art piece. And as tweaked by Mr. Mattney with council's oversight and approval of our resolution, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract. Did I state that?
I, I, I think that that sounds right.
Okay. Would anyone like, what?
I have one que-.
Go ahead.
One question. When it says staff driven process, is that all city staff or just your department?
It resides in our budget, resides in our department. So it would be our department that manages it.
Thank you.
Okay. Our, Mr. Craylon?
Just provides some feedback on this. I have no artistic talent, so I'll let us decide what's, what's good or what isn't. Just, you know, no butts, no guts and nothing that'll piss me off. So that's the only guidance I can give you.
I wonder if that's the reason you lowered your chair going?
No, no, that's, that's going to be in our concerns.
How are you going to phrase that in the solicitation, J R?
Inappropriate material will not be allowed.
We'll do that. All right. So at this point, we discussed it. Would we be ready to entertain an official motion?
Let me, let me try and do this off the top of my head. Mayor, I move that we employ for the selection of art pieces for the Malden Art Trail. A hybrid system in which staff manages the solicitation of art proposals. The Malden Cultural Council selects a limited number of finalists. Staff selects the final piece to make a recommendation to full council. And council votes on that recommendation to also authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
So that is a hybrid of the hybrid. Got it. Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion of what Mr. Mattney said as seconded by Ms. King. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated by Mr. Mattney and seconded by Ms. King. Ms. Miller, you got it written down, right? She's got it. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Here none, none, that motion carries.
Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Next item before us is Leadership Golden Strip Mural at the Malden Cultural Center coming out of community development. Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor, and making his second appearance of the night, I'd like to introduce Mr. J R Charles.
Hey, I'll be here all night, tips your waiters, waitresses. This is a request from Leadership Golden Strip of which I am a member this year. Project is identified to create three murals, one in Fountain Inn, one in Simpsonville and one in Malden. And the class has retained Art House to manage this project. Unfortunately, the ladies could not be here tonight. They did give me the nuts and bolts of the process and they would like to follow, so I'll be glad to explain it. Essentially, Art House will manage the process in the three cities. They will solicit feedback from those communities, particularly in Malden, because the site that they have proposed is the Malden Cultural Center. Specifically, the north wall where the two large stucco fill-ins where the windows used to be. And that sides with the identified an area. There are many ways to make a mural. You can paint on the bricks. You can put a film on top of it that can be easily peeled off in a process. It can be anything they want it to be or that you want it to be in particular, in this case. The art has not been selected. There is no theme. The only thing that they have, the Leadership Golden Strip Group has identified as a overall arch overarching theme is to recognize the textile history of the region. So there will be some kind of quilt like pattern. So that should a future class of Leadership Golden Strip or some other philanthropists come along and decide to add to it. It can be stitched together and expanded so that can tell the continuous story of the Golden Strip on that side of it. We latched on to it because we would like to see the black or brown spots on the back of the building beautified. It is a prominent feature that kind of falls behind the amphitheater stage. It's a good, it's a good. What am I looking for? It's a good backdrop for any pictures that someone may want to take for it. So we see as an opportunity plus Leadership Golden Strip will fund fifty percent of the mural. If need be a hundred percent, they are asking for five thousand dollars that the city of Malden contribute to the project as part of its fundraising initiative. That in a nutshell is the project. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if this is approved, I'm assuming that at a later point. You will come back to us and say, okay, this is what they propose to put up as a mural, correct? Or how does that go?
I would like if they would hold a listening session. I'm encouraging them to hold a listening session with you to get the values, as the mayor said in the previous item. To find the artistic patterns, the values, some of the inputs so that you feel comfortable directly in commissioning this piece of art is going on the side of the building. So I would say that first and then yes, ma'am, secondly, to come back to the recommendation.
So if I'm standing looking at the amphitheater stage, are we talking about those two pieces or the two over here to the right? Do we know?
Looking at the stage, there's two large windows.
Yes, over this way, right? Where's Gina? She would know. That's fine. I was just envisioning.
The backside lunchroom?
Yes, that's where I thought. Yes. Okay, the right side. I'm thrilled. I, I've been wanting to see art painted on the back of that building since we did mural on, on the other side. So I'm excited to see what they bring to us.
Is this a funding request that will end up with a production of a mural or just a study and a listening session? And, well, we think we could do something in the near future.
No, this will be an actual product that will be on site of the building, sir.
Second question is, is each city being asked five thousand to, to put up five thousand dollars and eat their respective cities for this project?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm making this request as a member of the Leadership Golden Strip class. I'm happy to put some of the money from my F twenty-four budget into it. But I will go back and ask if the cities in the other places will put that on there.
Reason I asked had to be in, in a previous Leadership Golden Strip class. That when we chose a project, we also chose to do the fundraising to pay for the project. There was no, at that time, there was no match asked for with from the city. It was, it was their project. They wanted to produce it. They had to get the funds through donations or whatever to make it happen. So we're not seeing this from this Leadership Golden Strip class.
They've pledged to raise all the funds. I'm merely trying to contribute on that side. And if it would help, I would take that request out or I would personally put up twenty-five hundred dollars of my own money if the city would put twenty-five hundred dollars.
Any other questions? Is there a motion that one would like to make?
One, one quick question. J R, the five thousand that would come from?
I would pull it from the advertising line item of the H and A budget, since this would serve a tourism aspect.
And that would leave you with?
One hundred and seventy thousand dollars in that particular line item.
How much?
One hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor, with that, I would move that we allocate five thousand dollars from the advertising line item and community development budget. For the mural project and also schedule a date and time convenient to council for a listening session. In order to create a vision for the mural.
Okay, a motion from Mr. Mattney, is there a second, Ms. King?
Second.
I felt the vibe. Goodness, King, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to allocate five thousand dollars from the community development advertising budget? To go toward the production of this mural for the city of Malden, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed like sign? Here none, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Those of you who patiently waited, we are now back to public comment. And I'll pull my list. And pardon me if I butcher your name, but. Please step to the mic and say your name and address, please.
Sometimes I mess up my own name, so forgive me. Mr. Mayor and Council members, I want to thank you for your time tonight. My name is Shukriel Kayad. I'm at twenty-six Endeavor Circle in Malden. And I'm a resident of the Whispering Oaks Town Home Community and also a board member on the Homeowners Association. We have some of our residents that came to support me and also show their numbers. Others couldn't be here tonight. On May thirtieth, a public works garbage truck leaked hydraulic fluid around Endeavor Circle on both sides of the road. While I can't estimate the amount of oil leaked, I can say with confidence the areas affected are approximately two thousand feet long and four feet wide in some areas. Through research, I found that hydraulic oil can significantly damage asphalt by breaking down the binders that hold asphalt together. Especially in temperatures below thirty-two degrees. Additionally, on May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, the state news, news reported a hydraulic spill near the state house, which was immediately forced road closures. While cleanup, cleanup efforts ensued. I communicated this information to our HOA board and our HOA president, James Cominsoli, called the city on May thirtieth. He was told the hydraulic oil would wash away next time it rains. Knowing that wasn't true, I called the city on June first and spoke to Josh Roberts. He said he would discuss the matter with his superiors. During this time, myself, James Cominsoli and HOA manager, Taran Willie, then emails asking for remediation. Also on June first, I spoke to Brad at Panagikos Paving. And was told hydraulic oil does affect the structural integrity of asphalt. And if not cleaned up immediately, it can break down pretty quickly. I understand mistakes happen, but in this case, the response time is what was detrimental to our situation. After more research, I found that seal coat, I'm sorry. After more research, I found that seal coating would only improve the aesthetics of the service surface, but wouldn't do anything to mitigate, mitigate the unrealized damage from the soaked in hydraulic oil. Therefore, I'm not in favor of seal coating. On June seventh, the city came out and attempted to clean up the spill with degreaser. Yesterday, I used a spoon to effortlessly break up some of the asphalt in an affected area. I tried the same thing in an unaffected area and was unsuccessful. On June sixteenth, Taran Willie received an email from Matt Fleeman indicating Endeavor Circle was included in the Malden roadway inventory. I looked at the Malden roadway inventory and was unable to find Endeavor Circle listed. But I did find Discovery Way and Challenger Court, two small streets within our community included on the inventory. This morning, I met with Matt Fleeman. He said he had been mistaken and that Endeavor Circle was in fact not on the city of Malden roadway inventory. The spill will accelerate the deterioration of our road. I expect home values will also deteriorate when our road becomes dilapidated. Additionally, the unrealized damage has placed an undue burden on our HOA. I'm asking the city to please consider including Endeavor Circle into the city's road inventory. If the city is unable to do so, the residents of Whispering Oaks ask that the road is replaced to the aesthetic and structurally sound condition it was in before the spill. The burden of this accident perpetrated by a city vehicle on private property did not fall on the innocent residents who are affected by it. Many of which who are on fixed incomes. We're asking for your help as Malden residents and as your neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone via Zoom public comment? Okay, thank you, sir. Next item, council concerns. Mr. Craylon?
I have two concerns. The first one being that like a meeting at the kids' table. So we've mentioned this before, can we get some new hydraulics in these chairs before I'm sitting on the floor completely? It kept going down as I was talking earlier. So I appreciate that. They don't replace chairs, just hydraulics. So the second piece asks that our city attorney please provide written instruction for future. Super majority, not super majority on the zoning, because I'm confused after that discussion. But we have a written, have that written for us. We have clarity around it.
Sir? Anyone else? Just from my point of view, I had it written down here, Mr. Craylon stole my thunder. But Seth, Mr. Duncan, I would appreciate if you would find a solution to our chairs as they sink up here. These are not old chairs. These are fairly new in the last two or three years. But the hydraulics, you know, we could, some of us who are more hefty could understand the hydraulics. Some of the lighter folks I watch up here also disappear from my view. So it is not a load capacity issue. There must be a defect or something in the hydraulic system or the chairs were just lover, government bid out, low bid, maybe.
Yes, sir, we'll get right on that tomorrow.
I would appreciate it.
Because he really wants me to disappear somewhere down here. And so I went and got me a higher chair tonight so that y'all could see me. But I think that the mayor has expressed that he didn't like lawyers. So I've taken it personally about my share. So I want to be sure the city administration fixes it.
And this represents one of his shorter stories and that explains why.
That is true.
Anything else, council concerns? Here none, what is the pleasure of council on adjournment?
No moved. Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Nine oh five.